Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers and on the Douglas County Board's website.
Recording in progress.
There is also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
President. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, December 14, 2021. And Item B, Call for a Meeting Set Tuesday, January 11, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Are you voting yes, Commissioner Friend?
I am. It's not working.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Friend is voting yes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to Resolutions. Items D through G and adjourn. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Dan, I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
President. We're going to move a few things around here as we begin the Board of Commissioners, and we're going to start off with a presentation as an update on our Project Next program at the University of Nebraska Medical Center. And with us this morning is Chancellor Dr. Jeff Gold to present. Good morning, Dr. Gold.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for the opportunity to join with you today. My name is Dr. Jeff Gold, and I serve as the Chancellor of the University of Nebraska Medical Center and also as the Executive Vice President and Provost of the University of Nebraska System. It's my great pleasure to be with you today. I want to start off by thanking you for this opportunity to provide an update on Project Next. The hard copy of this material and the electronic material has been provided to you previously, so I will go through this rather quickly, and hopefully you'll have some questions and an opportunity for discussion.
Dr. Gold, can you move the microphones just a little bit closer to their...
Is this better?
Or maybe take your mask off while you're presenting. We can't hear you very well.
I'll do my best.
There you go.
Is this better?
That's better.
Thank you. I'm just trying very hard, given all of the factors regarding the pandemic, to be safe for everybody.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I'd like to just start off and remind the Commissioners about the mission of the University of Nebraska Medical Center, and that is our mission is to lead the world in transforming lives to create a healthy future for all, underscore, all individuals and communities. And we do that through innovation, teamwork, excellence, accountability, courage, and healing. And certainly, the last nearly two years has demonstrated that in so many different ways. Over the last several years, there've been just a number of ongoing accolades. In the last year, the College of Medicine was actually ranked number six in the United States. The Med Center was just ranked number one in the state of Nebraska for health care as the best hospital for 10 consecutive years in a row. We recently were awarded a quality leadership from Visient, which is the health care, quality and safety organization that ranks us. Becker's Health Care identified us as one of the 100 great hospitals in America. We were rated one of the best by Newsweek. And just recently, the American Hospital Association, in a poll of 30,000 Americans anonymously who were recently hospitalized, voted the University of Nebraska Medical Center as the fifth most trusted institution in the United States for the delivery of health care. While rankings and ratings certainly are not completely part of the story of excellence, when they are good, it's worthwhile sharing them just to make the point to this board that we are definitely and continually on the move here. However, my time today is really to talk about public-private partnerships and particularly Project Next. I do want to remind the Commissioners that you were so gracious to participate in the planning and construction of the Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Center. We had several promises that we made when the Cancer Center was being planned regarding the National Cancer Institute accreditation, which we achieved the highest ranking we've ever had. Research impact, achieved our five-year goals in the first two years. Education and training, achieved all of our five-year goals. By the way, May will be five years since the opening of the Cancer Center. Increases in outpatient care and inpatient care achieved the five-year goals by the end of year two. Job creation, over 2,500 new jobs were committed over a five-year period. That was achieved in three and a half years. And the economic impact of the Cancer Center, which was estimated prior to construction over a five-year period, was achieved in the first two and a half years as well. And so this public-private partnership at the time was the largest in the history of the state of Nebraska and involved the state, involved the county, involved the city, and of course, involved the private philanthropic community. And by the way, we cure and prevent cancer on a daily basis. However, my subject with you today is Project Next, capital N, capital E, small x, capital T, and to provide you with an update on Nebraska transformation. This, of course, is still critical for the Med Center because of the ongoing need for medical and behavioral health needs in our region. Our existing facilities cannot support the existing needs for projected growth in education and training of the future generation of workforce and the clinical and basic science research programs that are necessary to continue to maintain cutting-edge care. The new technology that will improve safety and quality in the learning environment cannot be added to existing buildings. Indeed, the cost of renovation of existing buildings would approach just under $1 billion over a 10-year period. The current facilities impedes the recruitment of future residents, physicians, and staff. The Cancer Center is a really good example, a beautiful new facility. We've continued to recruit extremely successfully on a national basis. The configuration of the campus is unfriendly to students, staff, faculty, patients, visitors, and others. To this day, I still need breadcrumbs to get from one place to another to be sure I don't get totally lost. And as I said earlier, renovation is costly and impractical. In this graphic, you see the Keywood Towers, Dr. South Building, Clarkson, and University Towers that are all over 50 years old. And indeed, some of them are 65 and approaching 75 years of age. However, this project is also still incredibly compelling to our federal government partners. There are 10 Health and Human Services regions established nationally. Five have been selected for pilot programs, which are Region 7, Region 6, Region 9, Region 3. And we are across the institution that has been selected as the named site, as the coordinating center for all of the U.S. pilot programs. And this was made aware to us in a communication from the Secretary of Defense in March of last year. So this is a military and civilian, chemical, biological, radiologic, nuclear, and explosive, sea burn, surge capacity, diagnostic, and quarantine center with dedicated regional and national aspects of clinical research, education, and training to serve both the military and the civilian capabilities. And I will detail that for you in another minute. This is just a small list of some of our federal partners. The predominant ones are the Department of Defense, the Department of State, Homeland Security, Health and Human Services, and the Veterans Administration. Indeed, just by mention, the Veterans Administration facility, inpatient facility, is also aging significantly, and they're looking for a new location. And sharing a location with Project Next seems to be extremely attractive at this point as they continue to explore this, not just at the local level but at the vison level and on the national level as well. Again, highly interested in public-private partnerships. A lot of work with the Centers for Disease Control, with the Assistant Secretary for Preparedness and Response, a tremendous amount of work with the Joint Staff and the Defense Health Agency as well. As I have shared with you previously, and this is slightly updated, estimating where we'd be at the time of completion of this project, should it go forward on the timescale we're anticipating. We have had 21 years of continued increase enrollment at the Med Center, and we have gone over the last 10 years from about 3,200 to 4,200 students. We think we'll go to 4,800. Residents and fellows will go up. Research funding will go up another $100 million. Over the last 10 years, we've gone from 75 to $238 million of extramural research funding, as will our core labs, et cetera. This, from a clinical perspective, I want to be very clear about this, is a strategy neutral. That is to say, we do not plan to increase beds, outpatient or inpatient visits. This is where we currently are, and over the multiple sites across the state, this is where we think we will remain. Our overall budget will probably go up as a result of this by about $1 billion due to increased relationships with the federal partners. Our economic impact is currently estimated to be at about $6.2 billion. That is to say, new dollars brought into the state of Nebraska, which is estimated to go to $8.1 billion at completion of the project. And we directly and indirectly currently employ 54,000 individuals. By definition, a direct employee would be somebody we write a paycheck to. An indirect employee would be somebody who is contracted, that is to say, such as environmental services, food services, and so many others. And that will go up by approximately 9,000 high-paying jobs. And then finally, the footprint of the Omaha campus would go from approximately 12.8 to 16.3 million square feet. And these are estimates made by a very well-respected economic impact assessment through a firm named Trip Umbock, who has worked with many large academic medical centers across the United States for many years. So in summary, from an education and research perspective, this is a critically important thing to do for our community to support enrollment, the learning environment, expand clinical trials, statewide networks, and co-locate clinical and research programs as we have done with the Cancer Center. We need to be able to sustain our cutting-edge clinical programs, particularly in cancer, heart disease, neurosciences, high-complex women's health, and so many others. Operational efficiency, we think we could have as much as a 30% reduction in energy utilization because we are heating, cooling, and maintaining 50, 60, and 70-year-old buildings currently. The military linkages through the Department of Defense and the Veterans Administration are critically important. Air Force Mobility Command expertise, which we're currently involved in, is very important. And of course, having proximity to United States Air Force Base for transport is an absolute requirement, therefore ensuring the long-term sustainability of the OFIT enterprise. And then finally, from an economic impact, there is no question that this will continue to grow revenue for the county through employment.
Just a second, Dr. Gold. Could those on Zoom please mute?
I forgot about that.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you very much. Just briefly, in terms of the non-financial aspects of this, which is the facility planning, the site for this has been identified. We are about to issue an RFP for demolition of the former Monroe Meyer facility is on the corner of Farnham and Saddle Creek. It's approximately a 7.7-acre site, which immediately adjoins just north of the Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Center. So we are in the site concept and design stage right now, conceptualizing what is called the Innovation Design Unit, which will be a test site for various changes in inpatient care, including a fully operational and staffed unit, which will sit within University Tower on a much smaller scale to allow us to test and plan for what this 2.5 million square foot facility will actually look like. From a capital funding structure, the current estimates, if the current plan were to go forward at its full level, would consist of participation from multiple different areas. The current ask before the federal government over a five-year period beginning in 2023 is at $1.65 billion. We are currently, recently passed LB 1107 from the state, which is a commitment for $300 million. You may know that the City Council unanimously passed an inter-local agreement several weeks ago for $93 million over a 10-year period. The participation by the county is obviously why I'm here today. The private sector goal is at approximately $700 million, of which 438 million has been papered by this point, and multiple ongoing conversations are actively underway. And then there are multiple corporate RFIs and RFPs that are out. So by example, we will need a new, high-security, energy-efficient power plant. We have no desire to own or operate that power plant, so we are looking at multiple outside organizations who build, own, and operate power plants, which would be, just the power plant alone is probably somewhere between 300 and 400 million dollars of work that would be necessary to accomplish this. So what I thought I would do is just give you an update as to where we are in these various funding streams. As far as the federal government is concerned, we are actively engaged with the Department of Defense, the Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Homeland Security, and the Department of Veterans Affairs. And you can see this process goes through the congressional and the agency and departmental levels of authorization, which comes from the United States Congress, requirements which come from the department or the agency, and then appropriation. The Department of Defense is probably the most advanced in that the requirements have been finalized, and we're at the very early stages of planning for appropriation. There is language in the current federal budget for early planning dollars. However, as I'm sure you are well aware to this data, a federal budget has not been passed by the United States Congress or signed by the President. We are still living in a continuing resolution till at least February. On the civilian side, which is the predominantly Health and Human Services, ASPR, and what's called the HPP, the Hospital Preparedness Program, we're at the early stages of requirements development, and that is an ongoing conversation with HHS. And again, within the Department of Veterans Affairs, we've gotten quite advanced in terms of thinking with our local Veterans Administration leadership and with the vison. We are now at the stage of talking about the federal requirements, which will then lead to, hopefully, appropriation. That's, by the way, about $100 million project, proportion of it. This is language from the NDAA, the National Defense Authorization Act, and I can give you the whole act. It's about 2,200 pages long. However, this particular paragraph seems to be the functional part to me. The committee, that is, the HASC and the SAS, the Armed Services Committees, urge the Secretary of Defense to include sufficient funding in the department's fiscal year 2023 budget request necessary to execute a full-scale, operational, public-private partnership prototype of an all-hazards medical surge capability and to report back to the House and to the Senate Armed Services Committee, not later than March 2022, to include, and they go through a long list of what has to be included in this. This is passed into law at this time. So again, another major step forward of many steps. Just to also give you an idea of where we are with the state, we have completed the authorization and requirements process, and we're at the early stages pending appropriation. From the city perspective, as I said earlier, the interlocal agreement has been passed, pending appropriation to begin in 2023, as it does with the state philanthropically. As I said earlier, we're just over $400 million papered. Some of that has actually been letters of intent, some of them are commitments, and some of them have actually paid cash on the barrelhead. And so we are using that for planning, and we're using that for site development. It is well-known, and I'm free to share this with you, that the first private philanthropic investment was that of the Walter and Suzanne Scott Foundation for $125 million over a five-year period beginning in 2023. And then, as I said earlier, for the corporate world, there are any number of RFIs and RFPs for everything from site development, architecture and engineering, planning, power plants, utilities, and other such things. And so my goal here today is just to provide the Commissioners with an update, to, of course, encourage you to discuss the possibility of participating in this project, possibly partnering with us on some of the health care needs of our community, if that would make sense, as the VA, the federal government, the state, and others have done. And I look forward to your questions. This is an architectural rendering. I guarantee you, it won't look exactly like this, but this is the corner to your left of, I don't know if this works, but to your left, you're looking at Farnham, the corner of Farnham and Saddle Creek. So in the distance, you're looking at the Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Center. To my right, you're looking at the Durham Research Towers. And to your left, you're looking at a multi-layered shared facility with a bed tower, an inpatient facility, perhaps one for the VA, perhaps one for neurosciences, perhaps additional space for the Cancer Center, which is completely out of space, et cetera, et cetera. This, again, is just simply an architect's rendering, which has been quite useful in at least sharing the concepts. So I close by simply saying that this is not about bricks and mortar. This is about how we build a transformational model for the future of health and the future of caring for our community. So with that, I'm complete, and be very pleased to answer any questions that you may have. I hope I stayed within a...
No, you did great, Dr. Gold. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thank you for this, doctor, and I'm happy to say that UNMC is now coming into my district on the county board. We just approved new maps, so I'm very pleased to represent the UNMC campus. You're a great asset to our community and to our state. You're aware of the ARPA funding cycle that we're in right now, and we've been holding hearings on a lot of health care needs in our community. And I'm particularly interested in the clinical care mentioned that you have on page 11 because just in yesterday's hearing, we addressed the disparity in infant mortality rates in our community between the minority community, particularly African-Americans, and the rest of the community. It's stark. And I'm glad to see that the clinical care portion of your presentation addresses meeting care needs in Nebraska because this is high on our list. The other one is mental health, and particularly long-term mental health concerns. We are a neighbor of UNMC to the south at the Douglas County Health Center, and we're eager to collaborate with UNMC, and we do some collaboration already, to provide long-term health care to our community, which is almost totally lacking at this time. So I was just wondering if you could expand a little bit on how meeting the care needs in Nebraska would address specifically these two things. The disparity in infant mortality, that's babies who die, between the minority community very near to the UNMC campus, and the total lack of long-term mental health that we are eager to collaborate with UNMC on providing on 42nd Street.
So those are both areas I could easily spend an hour each on, but I promise you I won't. As far as the infant mortality is, I'm sure your board is aware, this is a very complex issue that has to do with prenatal care and even preconception care, and then the services that are available for labor and delivery and for follow-up neonatal care. The Med Center offers comprehensive services in this entire spectrum and actually handles some of the most complex, high-risk maternal fetal medicine needs of the community. Indeed, since the St. Joe's closed several years ago, we have dealt with the majority of the high-risk obstetrics and perinatal care for the North Oak, South Oak communities, and indeed, almost everything west of, east rather, 72nd Street. We have capacity for that, and we will continue to enhance that as the need continues to arise. As far as mental health is concerned, there are just so many different moving parts to that. But let's just say, one of the main reasons the Veterans Administration is so interested in partnering with us is they want to expand their inpatient mental health facilities. We are interested in expanding inpatient and outpatient mental health facilities. Beacon, which is the behavioral health education and training programs that we partner with, is all about growing the mental health workforce, which is desperately needed. So it's not just, sir, about beds and, you know, bricks and mortar, but it's very much about the mental health professionals. So we are all in on that. That is a huge unmet need for the state, as is infant mortality, but also, as is cancer. As you may know, we have the second highest pediatric brain cancer rate in the United States and many other statistics that we're not proud of, and we're working very hard to assist.
So is there anything specifically in the next initiative that would address these two areas clinically?
We are not at that stage of planning. We are really just looking more broadly right now at what the clinical, inpatient, and outpatient care environments of the future are going to look like. Some of our partners may have more advanced thoughts on that. So for instance, the Department of Defense may, and Homeland Security and Health and Human Services, you know, as we've learned from this pandemic and so many other natural tragedies, be they hurricanes, fires, et cetera, that there are not only medical issues, but there are very severe and enduring behavioral health issues that have to be managed. We have learned that over and over again, not just in our patients and in the community, but frankly, in our own workforce. And so those are all considerations that we are actively dealing with. But if there was a desire to have a footprint for an expanded inpatient mental health facility, for instance, could be easily done.
Time. Thank you. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Thank you, Dr. Gold. It's very impressive. Of course, we can't deny the economic impact of creating a facility like this. At the same time, I noticed that when you were speaking to this, you were talking about how clinical care really won't change. You don't expect the numbers to really change on that. So as the county board, I feel like our mission really is to care for the indigent, the poor, those who really don't have another place to go or a safety net. So I think the biggest thing with me is what can we do to rectify the fact that you're requesting funding from us when we could be, say, having staff go into people's homes to help with things like maternal care and as opposed to buying a really amazing facility? So I think it's the individual people. How does that impact the citizens of, besides the economic impact? Is there a true clinical impact to this?
So this will have a huge clinical impact beyond a single facility. As I said earlier, one of the most important goals of this is to increase workforce, to educate and train those individuals that will go into people's homes, who will be the future generation of health care professionals for mental health and for behavioral health. We hope to continually expand those programs, and we grow. I mean, we've grown every year for the last 21 years. As a matter of fact, last year, our enrollment went up 6.5%. This year, it went up 3.5%, which may not seem like huge numbers, but the ability to attract and retain that kind of talent in our community, and these are all people who live here, pay taxes here, buy food here, entertain guests here, et cetera. But absolutely, so we are looking at a combination of workforce development, continual clinical research in order to prevent some of the medical problems and better treat some of the medical and behavioral health problems that we have, and at the same time, to have cutting-edge facilities to reduce our costs. cutting-edge facilities to reduce our costs. And, you know, as time goes on, what used to be managed as an inpatient stay is now managed as an outpatient stay. Much of what was critical care is now routine med-surg. And an awful lot of hospitals are becoming very large critical care units, dealing with very complex surgical problems or complex infectious diseases, of course, as we're dealing with right now. Acuity rises, and so you need a very special type of workforce to do that, which has special training requirements as well. There's no question, this is aimed at a very broad spectrum of the 50-year approach to the delivery of care in the communities that we serve, all of the communities that we serve.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest thing I would like to see, just as plans develop, what that specific clinical impact would be, what the plans are to go out into the community to provide services that are necessary there. I do know that, of course, the trend of healthcare is to provide more outpatient services as to inpatient for a lot of reasons. It's, you know, less costly to do it that way, but also, it's, you know, people know it can be risky to be in a hospital for long periods of time. So I would really like to see the clinical impact, like very specifically, what services are provided from a mental health standpoint, to reach out, what community outreach will there be as a result of this project?
All of that does continue to increase even as we speak, before we invest a single dollar. And I'd be more than pleased to provide the board a summary of that. If you're interested, and if you're mostly interested in mental health, there's quite a story of positive growth that we, that our Department of Psychiatry, that Beacon, that our counseling centers have delivered. But more than pleased to provide that to you.
Yeah, I think we're looking, just on an aside note, as far as the mental health commitment of Douglas County and the ARPA money, I think that we need to have that conversation and see UNMC and other health systems as partners in that. We absolutely can't do it alone. So, but again
And nor can the Med Center do it alone. We really need to be a partner.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gold, thank you for the information. And I just wanted to let you know, I was at the, I was at UNMC's commencement ceremony on Friday, and it was great. I got a chance to hear your, hear your speech, and I enjoyed it. I was excited to see the amount of graduates. It was encouraging to see the amount of graduates, particularly the nursing graduates. There were a lot of them, at least it seemed like there were to me. And one of the things that concerns me, and I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but we run a health center here in Douglas County, and the nursing shortage nationwide concerns me. I'm asking you to opine on something, if you wouldn't mind. I know you don't have a crystal ball. One of the, there's a variety of reasons for that, right? I mean, COVID has put stress on nurses, doctors, staff, and also, I would, the research that I've done, it would indicate that nationwide, we haven't been training enough nurses in particular, right? I mean, at least, that's what I've seen. Now, you are, where do we go as a county trying to get the appropriate amount of people to satisfy the county need? You have the problem, CHI has the problem. We're all fighting for skilled labor in that environment. And I guess I just wanted your expertise and opinion on where you think that crystal ball takes you. I'm concerned about it. I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I'm worried two years down the road that we're going to be in a strange situation.
We're in a strange situation today, sir, and the current predictions are that it's only going to get worse. I have the great honor of co-chairing the Steering Committee for the National Academy of Medicine Clinician Well-Being Task Force. And I can tell you, looking at all of the health professions, we have seen significant attrition, and given the current state of the pandemic, we are likely to see a lot more before this is over. But on an optimistic side of the equation, we continue to have very strong enrollment in our urban and rural nursing educational programs, and we continue to retain the overwhelming majority of our students in the state, in, at the bachelor's, master's, and at the doctoral levels. One of the critical things that this project will do is to provide us with more clinical training space for physicians, nurses, pharmacists, therapists, and others. And that may not seem as an important characteristic, but actually, clinical binding sites for our nurses, doctors, other healthcare professionals is one of the most limiting factors that we have. We could easily increase nursing school, medical school, pharmacy school enrollment if we had more clinical binding sites for these individuals. But unfortunately, we are really maxed out in so many different locations. And so this will provide a unique opportunity to really ramp up the clinical training, not just for us, but for all of the nursing schools that participate in training sites at the Med Center. And not just here in Omaha, but frankly, in our rural campuses as well. As you may know, we're working very closely with Carney and Scotts Bluff to look at enrollment increases, because the rural need for healthcare professionals has also been dramatically impacted by the pandemic as well. But again, this is going to take a partnership. Frontline healthcare workers are at extreme risk. They have been for a long period of time. And indeed, pre-pandemic, the projected nursing workforce shortage for the state of Nebraska was 4,000 nurses. That's a huge number, due to age, attrition, retirement, et cetera, and based upon the current regional pipeline. That's something that we've been working very, very hard to do through our five nursing campuses. This project, Project Next, will allow us to exponentially increase that training.
Thank you, doctor.
Commissioner Garcia?
Good morning, Dr. Gold.
Morning.
Thank you for being here and presenting today. I just wanted to briefly echo a bit of what Commissioner Boyle was saying in regards to the potential partnership and kind of the pitch for funds to UNMC in the future for this project from the county. I would love for us to also specify a little more in detail how we could partner to address items of interest that we both have on both ends, specifically in the area of mental health. So what would entice the pitch, at least for me, would be to, you know, today we learned in more detail what you're looking to do with your project, if the UNMC side as a public partner of ours could also learn in detail what are our needs on the mental health side, and then really specify how we can collaborate as two public partners with limited resources to address some of the needs that are of mutual interest. That would really kind of make the pitch more, like I said, enticing, but also make more sense rationally to me as knowing that our budget is quite limited as cost of living increases every year, and, you know, we have a certain set budget. And so I just wanted to briefly echo that, but also, thank you for coming to talk to us directly today, as these conversations definitely need to happen. So, thank you.
Well, appreciated, sir, and it's a pleasure to meet you, by the way. The opportunity to do that is wide open. You know, the conversations we are having with the Department of Defense and Homeland Security and others are literally getting down to how many beds, how many operating rooms, how many cath labs, endo suites, labor and delivery units, exactly how much air handling is going to need to be in place to, I mean, think of this like a giant biocontainment unit in that sense. And so this would be a perfect time to begin that kind of conversation. We're having exactly similar conversations with the Veterans Administration, and we're actually working with some of the local mental health providers, talking about what we might be able to do with a transitional unit, as well as other opportunities to increase resources for mental health, mostly, frankly, to keep people out of inpatient facilities and to keep people out of the largest mental health facility in the state, which, of course, is our correction system, which we, that's not a good place to deliver mental health services.
Yep, that's exactly where we're at with our conversation and some of the needs we're trying to address, so.
Sure. So we have a whole team of people, as you might imagine, sir, that would be, myself included, that would be welcome, that kind of conversation, and however it would be best to have it, just let me know.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Dr. Gold, thank you very much for this presentation, and I think Commissioner Garcia summed it up with the budget we face. We have one source of revenue, which are property taxes, and we all know that with us being about the sixth highest in the country, it makes it a challenge for us to make certain that we hold the line on our mill levy. I think the partnership is really what we ought to work with you on and talk about that and how we can work together. And I, you know, our chairperson, maybe there's two or three of us that could participate in some of those discussions, as Commissioner Garcia said, and I know Commissioner Borges and our chairperson is, made this really a priority, and so have, I think I can speak for all of us, the mental health is a big priority of this county board, and I think a partnership is what we need to be involved in for certain, or at least be involved in some discussions about that. And that's where I'd like to see us go, and if we can do something like that, I think that's beneficial to all of us, so.
Well, thank you for that, sir. We are very open to this partnerships. Indeed, the whole premise of this project is partnership with our federal departments and agencies, with our state departments and agencies, and of course, with the city and the county. And so we look forward to those discussions, Commissioner, and, you know, just tell us, tell me when and where, and we'll be there.
All right. No other lights. Thank you, Dr. Gold, for being here. Safe travels to Lincoln, and you'll be hearing from us soon.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays to you. Be safe.
You too. With that, we are going to take, move up to the recognition and proclamations. I see many people in our audience today, and I think they're here for the wonderful Mr. Larry Miller. And we do Larry is the Chief Office Deputy for the Register of Deeds Office, and he is retiring after 15 years of service. And with us today is Register of Deeds Assessor Diane Bodyato, and of course, Mr. Larry Miller.
Well, thank you, Board, for acknowledging Larry for his 15 years of service. And you'll see, there are quite a few of our staff all over, because we all love and are going to very well miss Larry. Myself immensely. Larry has been my partner in the office for 15 years now, and extremely my right-hand man. An elected official or a manager who is lucky enough to have a very astute and professional partner in running an office is very, very lucky, and sometimes very rare. And to have one that has the longevity of 15 years, I feel very blessed, and I know my staff is as well. If you notice, I just, and I won't take up much time, but if you notice, I brought my folder, and the reason I bring my folder is because this connects me with Larry for any of our presentations and our public speaking engagements. Larry has been my mentor. He has methodically put together my script, if you shall say, for each and every one of our presentations. Not this one. But anyway, just as methodically as he presents me with this when we go out into the public or to different events, I just as methodically toss it to the side in about the first paragraph of his script. I always keep it in front of me, and we always laugh afterwards, is because I'll say, "So how did I do, Larry?" And he will say, "Well, had you followed the script, it would have been perfect. But when you improvise with your Dianeisms, it's just as perfect, just not how I've written it." So I just always chuckle, because he has, he has kept our office, he has kept me level. We very much complement each other in our personalities. I'm the crazy Italian, I guess if you would call that, you know, with my, with my ideas and my emotions, and he's always been the one to bring me in off the ledge, if I've ever needed to be brought in off the ledge. Very professional, very calm. He's done a lot on the personnel level in my office. And like I said, we have really complemented each other. And it's going to be very difficult to not have him to be my go-to person. Anyone in the building, you all have known Larry. He is our man of the day, man of the hour, man of the 15 years, esquire in his attire. We should all take huge, huge note in just what a true professional and gentleman dresses like. So everybody who knows that, and he's just been an all-around asset to all of us. If there's, there's many words that describe Larry, but I will say, before we give this honor of emotionally telling him goodbye, he's here till next Monday, actually. But if there's many, many words that describe Larry Miller, the top two that come to mind is he, he is a gentleman and a scholar, and he bodes well with both of those very, very enduring words. So Larry, congratulations on your retirement. You know you're not going to be completely rid of me, and you can't change your phone number. So I want to very well acknowledge Larry Miller as a wonderful participant for Douglas County and personally for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Larry, if you would rise and come to the podium, I'd like to read the resolution that we are presenting you today. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas on December 22nd, 2006, Lawrence Miller was hired as Chief Office Deputy in the Douglas County Register of Deeds Office. And whereas on January 8th, 2015, Lawrence Miller continued on the responsibility of Chief Office Deputy when the two separate offices, Douglas County Register of Deeds and Douglas County Assessors, merged as one. Now the Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office, and whereas Lawrence Miller always performed his duties with the intention of doing what was best for both the operations of Douglas County Government and the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas Lawrence Miller faithfully and with honor, integrity, and great distinction served as Chief Deputy, Office Deputy for 15 years. And whereas the county wishes to recognize Lawrence Miller of the Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office on his retirement and his dedicated service of 15 years to Douglas County, Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Lawrence Miller for his dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof, dated this 21st day of December, 2021. And with that, I would ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Mr. Clerk, mine's not working.
Okay.
Larry, I'm voting yes.
Okay.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We have a few lights on. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
It's an honor to have served with you, Larry, as a colleague in the county government. You're an excellent public servant, and thank you for your service. You're also a good friend, and I'm going to miss seeing you. I'm also going to miss seeing probably the best shoe collection in Douglas County government. I don't think that's a close one. I think you'll carry that honor down through history. Thanks for everything that you've contributed. You were there at a pivotal time in the consolidation of the Register of Deeds Assessors' offices, and your professionalism and attention to detail has not gone unnoticed by anybody who dealt with you. I've always remarked on the high level of service that you give to the people of Douglas County. Every interaction I've ever had with you has been just the best. And so thank you for everything, and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Friend?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Larry, we haven't, I think I met you once. We haven't gotten a chance to know each other, but I'm just wondering, do you, do you sing and play guitar? Because you have, you have groupies here. You can make some, you can make some money. I'm just, Larry, thanks for your service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye.
I will.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Larry, I guess from First National to here, just goes without saying, thank you for the years for, I would just say personally, quiet examples at times, but also, I guess I would just say my bridge to diplomacy on a lot of issues for message carrying. Your service definitely will be missed, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Commissioner Morgan?
Larry, I'd like to thank you for excellent service always, and I also, when I heard that about the shoes, I can remember, you know, I try to emulate a little bit of you. I know you complimented me on a pair of shoes some years ago at this county board, and you may recall that.
I do.
And I guess you told me I had okay shoes. So, I appreciate that nice compliment that you gave me, and you're very observant. You take care.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Larry, we crossed paths a few times throughout the years in the community, mostly when I would book Diane for speaking engagements, and the one main thing I remember is that you better get Diane's title right, because if we did not, especially after the merger with the two, because I know if we got it wrong, we'd be in trouble with Larry. So, thank you for your dedication to the office, to Douglas County, and the community.
Thank you.
Larry, there's really, I mean, the dressing is, that's like, wow. I mean, you are going to go down in history as a sharp-dressed man. But for me, walking through the halls of this building and running into you and seeing that smile is what I'm going to miss, and I could even tell with our mask on when you were smiling. So, I'm going to miss that, but I do wish you the best in your retirement. Enjoy it, and, and don't be a stranger, though.
I will not. Thank you.
And would you like to say a few words?
I am speechless, believe it or not. It's been a great 15 years, and, well, we'll see what happens. I thank you both, all of you, for your support over the years, and I wish you the best in 2022, as I say to my friends, upward and onward.
Very good, Larry. Thank you. And if you could come around, we'll shake your hand and give you the resolution? And then, yeah, and then we'll come forward and get a picture after that.
If I could just close one more second before we leave the building, basically, is the proof of the pudding with Larry's connection with his staff is all the people that are here today with our wonderful team. Not everybody was, was able to come up to the LC level today, because we do have some business to still do, but anyway, Larry, you reap what you sow, and look what you've sown with both of our offices. We are so very fortunate.
Good luck, Larry, and thank you all for being here for him this morning. We have one more recognition we'll do. This individual is not here, but Robert Hardy worked for the Douglas County Engineers Department and is retiring after 15 years, and we wish Robert the best on his retirement and thank him as well for his service to Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go back now to the beginning of the agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 14, 2021. The minutes from our pre-board meeting of Monday, December 13, 2021, are also available on the website. Item B, approval of the claim submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 20, 21, 21st, 2021, and also approval of a resolution authorizing the clerk comptroller to make certain payments while the board is adjourned, say and die. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through O. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Larry.
Morning.
Store 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Today, I want to point out, particularly at Christmas time, that there are people in our country that are well-known conservatives. They're not only educators and professors, but talk show hosts, and extremely well-known authors of bestseller books on the topic. One of those is Mark Levin. In his current book, it's about American Marxism, which is not discussed in this country or in this city, and I think the River City ought to be where it is, because we are cloaked in a modern version of Marxism in many things that we hear around here. I won't take the time to read very much, but as he states in the book, it is a pervasive thing. It's often cloaked in terms such as democratic socialism, social justice, or whatever, and the BLM movement, regardless of what professors say, and did say last week. There is a truth to that being part of the Marxist, new Marxist theology, which is really still old, it's the same old thing, basically destroy American culture. We do not need to permit any such thing in this country. We are a republic, and the greatest, greatest country, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, before we do the other presentation, is Mr. Volmer in the audience? Okay, we're going to do the public hearing here, and this public hearing is for a liquor license for Jeff Volmer, DBA Bennington Farms, at 16102 Highway 36, Bennington, 68007, and the manager application for Jeff Volmer of 14202 Pawnee Road, Bennington, Nebraska. Good morning.
Morning.
We're here for, this is the public hearing. Would you like to say a few words about your application?
Yeah, we just, we purchased Bennington Farms earlier this year, and it's a Christmas tree farm, and we've remodeled the sales barn, and we'd like to do little venues, small weddings, graduation parties and stuff like that, so we'd like to rent it out. Also during the seasonal time of the Christmas trees, that's why we'd like to be able to have the liquor license.
There was an issue that was brought to our attention, that the requirement by the county board to have notice to citizens 500 feet in radius.
Okay.
Was that, did you find out if that was done, or are there no residents within that?
There is no residence.
That's what we wondered. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other, anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Chris. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now go back to our presentations, the COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update presented by Dr. Lindsay Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, currently, in Douglas County, we are still experiencing a high level of transmission of COVID-19, and we've had developments over the past week or so, so we'll kind of cover that as we go here, but we'll start out with a summary. So, currently, we are having, we have 323.5 cases for a seven-day total per 100,000. I want to just note for you that we have had two consecutive weeks of decreases in cases now, which is evident when you're looking at this graph, but I want to also just preface that with knowing that the situation is changing pretty quickly across the United States, given the new variant, and so, this decrease in cases, we are not expecting it to last very long. Just knowing that the situation, you know, that's occurring globally doesn't necessarily support that, but we are going to take what we can when we can, so we're glad to have at least a couple of weeks of decrease there. We do continue to remain in that high transmission category, which is that red category, and let's do test positivity instead here. So, test positivity did drop slightly last week, although the number of tests actually done went up, so we know that test positivity also did drop just a little bit. I wouldn't call this a significant drop. We were around 12.5 the week before last, and then that dropped to 10.4. So, we know that, you know, what we have seen is, is a true decrease, but again, with Omicron, which has not arrived here in Douglas County yet, that we have proven, it probably is somewhere in our community, we just haven't sequenced enough tests maybe to catch that. You know, I would, I would think, and especially given the amount of time people will be spending indoors and in gatherings over the next couple of weeks, that this will probably start to go back up. Cases in our community continue to be in certain age groups more so than others. If I can, here we go. All right, so this is looking at the past month or so, with the last ending 12/11. You can see where the largest groups of cases are occurring really in those young adult categories, and then, of course, in our pediatric populations as well. So, we do continue to see that we're having more cases in, in those young adult groups, and, you know, we're not 100% sure what drives that. There are probably multiple factors that are driving that, so we will continue to encourage people to get their vaccine, to get their boosters, and to wear masks, social distance, and do all of those things that, you know, have worked in the past. We do continue to see some clusters and outbreaks that occur in our schools, and we are working with each of those schools to identify ways that we can best contain that, depending on what the school's policies are. I'm going to move this here. All right, so I don't think that we've had any huge changes in terms of where we're seeing the virus. So, this was last week through Fri, Saturday of last week, so you can see kind of in those same areas where we've seen high transmission previously, although just a little bit more we've seen kind of across the southern end of Douglas County. We added 15 deaths last week, I believe, I'm sorry, 11 deaths last week. Six of those were unvaccinated. Those that were vaccinated were all over the age of 75 and had other, had other conditions that may have predisposed them to severe illness. So, we are continuing to see and add those deaths each week. The ones who are, who are unvaccinated and pass are tending to be in the younger group, typically below, below 75 years of age, even below, even younger than that, 65 years of age, which is, of course, very concerning to us. Our hospitalizations continue to be very high. Currently, today, I think the report was 80, 85% for total capacity, however, ICUs are at 93% capacity, which is very troubling. You can assume that that just means they're full. It's very difficult, also knowing that the staff that are taking care of those patients are taking care of more patients than they normally would, so just talking about that capacity doesn't necessarily tell the whole picture of what's happening there, and I think it's really important for us to keep that in mind. Our ventilator usage did drop just a little bit over the past couple of weeks, so that's good. However, you know, as we see that lag with hospitalizations that occurs and the spike that we've currently been experiencing, that potentially could go up again as well. There have been a lot of discussions in the community about hospitals over the past week or two. I myself had the opportunity to meet with hospital leadership within Douglas County to discuss the capacity issues. It is not, it is not looking good. If anyone has been on the press conferences that have been held between DHHS and the local area hospitals, you can hear and see the frustration and the exhaustion in the faces of those people who are in those hospital situations trying to scramble to keep, keep care moving for the community. It's, it's a pretty dire situation. I do know that there are discussions happening right now at the state level to find ways to alleviate some of the bottlenecks that are occurring within the hospitals in terms of getting patients moved. If they're not at a hospital level of care, getting them moved to another care facility, essentially, that can, that can adequately care for those patients until there's a bed open for them, like in a skilled nursing facility or, or something similar to that. So, those, those conversations are ongoing. I don't know that anything is in place yet, but I know that Dr. Anton up at the State Health Department has been very involved with the Nebraska Hospital Association, having those conversations to see what can be done there. Breakthrough cases continue to increase slightly over time. Again, this is the percentage of people who have been fully vaccinated, who then go on to develop a COVID-19 infection that is verified through a test. So, we're currently at 2.6%. As we work on getting people boosted, that number hopefully is going to level off or decrease. Currently, we're only at about 37.5% of our community with either a third dose or a booster, so, you know, working on getting people in for those boosters remains an important task for us. And the death And the death rate for those who have been vaccinated has increased just slightly. It was 0.01 for a very long time, and it did increase to 0.02, which is still extremely low and still does point to really that our vaccinations are working quite well to prevent those very severe cases and deaths in many, many cases. Our vaccination efforts are ongoing, and right now we are very busy, which is really great. We love seeing all of the people coming out to get these, these vaccines. So currently, we're sitting at 67% out of all of our residents having had at least one dose, which is some good progress. We are at 72.3% of the eligible population having one dose. So again, making some good progress there. Fully vaccinated for all Douglas County residents is 62.6, and for eligible is 67.6. So we continue to work on that and keep pushing that up as much as we possibly can. For our adolescents, we have 68.3 with at least one dose and 61.8 are fully vaccinated. And then for our five to 11-year-olds, since this is our newest effort, I wanted to make sure that you got to see this. So we're about a month out from the approval on that. 18.3% are now fully vaccinated, 28.5% with at least one dose. And of course, you're going to just see that fully vaccinated go up and up as those kiddos that have just become eligible to get that first dose are now eligible for their second. So that, that number should be increasing significantly over, over the coming weeks. Just to give you kind of an idea of where vaccination, higher vaccination rates are, here's the map. So this has not changed significantly in, in the past weeks. So we continue to see our highest levels of vaccination in that Elkhorn and Bennington corridor, and our lowest rates, the further east you go. So we are continuing all of those efforts that we talk about every single week in terms of meeting with our, our partners in both North Omaha and South Omaha to really find ways to make the vaccine accessible, and also to educate people on the safety and the efficacy of the vaccine so that they will feel comfortable getting the vaccine. And we are seeing people who are coming in for their first doses. So we are, we continue to see adults who are coming in to get their vaccine for the first time. So while the effort is slow, we know that we are reaching people. We have people who are making it kind of a family thing, and you know, the, the parents are getting their first vaccines when their kids are getting vaccinated. And we're just continuing, continuing to offer it and get it out to the public as much as possible. They're also working on the clinical trials for the zero to five-year-old or zero to, I should say, zero to four-year-old population. They did have a little bit of a setback with that, not in safety. They found actually that the vaccine is very safe for those kiddos, but they need to work with the dosage to get that, the dosage correct for those little ones. So we're hoping to see vaccine become available for that age group sometime after the first of the year. It sounds like they're probably going to split that into maybe two to four and zero to two, or I should say six months to two, typically below six months. We're not giving much vaccine of any kind, just a few things. So those efforts are ongoing. And we will, of course, you know, when, when that becomes available for that age group, we will make sure that it's available to the public. We anticipate that pediatricians' offices will probably get requests most frequently just due to the young age of those, those patients. It is a little bit of a challenge for us in terms of providing the right setting for vaccine for those kids, just because there tends to be more time that needs to go into those encounters. They can be a little tougher. We like to say screaming is contagious. So if you have a mass vax clinic with a bunch of two-year-olds, and one starts, the whole place starts. So, you know, we have some considerations that we have to think through. But absolutely, we will continue to make that available, even if people don't have a pediatrician, to the people in our, our community who most need that. So we're making, we're having discussions and making plans for that. There's also, hopefully at some point will be medication, prophylactic medications forthcoming, and we're working with the state on how best to distribute those. Most likely, that will be through our FQHCs, but we're still kind of waiting on all of the plans for that. So that is what we are doing currently with COVID-19 in Douglas County, and I'm happy to take any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. Yeah, it's, it's troubling going into the holidays. We're at 98,989 cases in Douglas County since the onset of the pandemic. Eight, 189 deaths with a total vaccinated population of 62.6, which brings me to my first question. The, the population that's vaccinated, is that the total population or the eligible population? It's the total population, right?
So on this front, so the 62.6
Right.
Is all Douglas County residents regardless of age.
Okay. So you followed that up. I think the number was 32% of that have boosters. Is that right?
We're at about 37% of those of the fully vaccinated have had either a third dose or a booster. And unfortunately, we don't, we don't have a way to separate out a third dose from a booster. We just know that people got basically a third dose, which could be either. And we will have that displayed at some point on the dashboard, I believe. We're just trying to think through the best way to, to add that data here.
So I think you said that the positivity rate had, had nudged down just a little bit from like 12 to?
Like 10.8.
10.8. But that could be anomalous. You're expecting it to increase here shortly again?
Yeah. I mean, given, given the amount of, the amount of spread that we already have going on, the potential for Omicron to increase that, and the fact that people over the next couple of weeks are going to be more in settings where they could have transmission, so they're going to be gathering a lot more frequently. You know, all of those things can lead to more test, you know, more contagion, more sickness, more testing. And then I would, I would of course, expect that positivity to go back up.
So that brings up the question of the day. With the holidays upon us, and people are going to be gathering, families are coming together. You know, we just, as a board, cut some community advisory videos this morning urging people to get vaccinated and wear a mask. Vaccination's pretty simple. Go get vaccinated. What is the best mask policy going into the holidays that we can have?
I continue to really encourage people to wear masks when they're in indoor settings where they don't know, you know, the vaccination status or the exposure status of the people that they're around. So that can be just about anywhere.
Like this setting?
Absolutely. In this setting, I would highly recommend that masks be worn. I, I'm going to continue to encourage that behavior probably for a while, given that we have a new, more transmissible variant that, that will be there.
And I've heard this, you probably have too, where people say, well, I don't need to wear a mask. I'm vaccinated and I've had my booster. What do you say to that?
First of all, thank you for getting your vaccine and your booster. We're so proud of you for that. I have had my vaccine and my booster, and I continue to wear a mask. And the reason for that is that, you know, nothing is 100%. You know, there's no such thing as a vaccination that is 100%. There is always that tiny incremental little chance that I could catch COVID. And if I have it and I'm not symptomatic, I could still spread it. And I don't want to be that person who is transmitting COVID to another person who may be vulnerable in ways I don't know. You know, it could cause a lot of illness.
One minute.
So I do, I do this out of the responsibility that I feel toward my community.
Thank you. And to that, you're talking like breakthrough cases can happen from vaccinated people. And in the last week, I think five of the 11 deaths that we had here were breakthrough cases.
That's correct.
So thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. You as well.
Stay well.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks, Dr. Hughes. And then just to continue on with what Dr., or Dr., Commissioner Kavanaugh was, was, was bringing up, as far as the recommendation for masks, it, it seems that if Omicron is more contagious, we really should be doing more than what we've been doing, even though we are vaccinated and boosted and all that. And so as, as you know, there are, you know, people are still going to concerts, going to basketball games, you know, doing their sports and all that, and, you know, meeting in bars. When you see that the numbers of cases are increasing in that young adult population, I assume that that's probably where they're getting it, is because they're socializing. And so do you, do you think we'll get a point, get to a point, or would you say we should be working towards a mask mandate again?
Sure. I've actually already kind of thought that way. Of course, again, we're going back to who can do a mask mandate and who can authorize that. You know, I don't have the ability to issue a countywide mask mandate, but especially knowing that Omicron is, is circulating, and while it may, we don't know yet, be more mild, it, just the amount of illness that it can cause is, is, is going to drive up hospitalizations. And so, you know, it, it makes sense to me when hospitals are talking about things like potentially going to crisis standards of care at some point. It makes sense to me that we are, are also looking at what's happening on the community side and, and, and trying to prevent inflow to the hospitals as much as, as possible. So it's something that I've already thought about and had to have, have had conversations about. Unfortunately, I just don't think that there's the will there to do that at this point. I know some other cities have been successful in getting one implemented in light of Omicron, but I don't, I don't know that we're there.
I see. And so I know just at the state level, it does take mostly a state will basically to do it. Even the governor yesterday was talking about if you don't have a doctor who will prescribe monoclonal antibody, you should find a new doctor, you know? So I think that maybe even someone like him is getting on board that this is something to actually, it's a big, it's becoming a big deal finally to him. And so do you see any movement on the, the state level? I know that there are a lot of mitigating ways to decrease hospital capacity before. It feels like to me, mask mandate or vaccination mandate is something that's last on the state's list from that political will. But there are other things to do, like requiring all hospitals to not do elective surgeries. Have you heard, felt or noticed any movement from a state level since they can, they can supply the, the emergency status to make that happen? What type of movement has happened there to help decrease hospital capacity?
So that has been discussed, and there ha, they, basically the decision, at least at this time, was not to issue a DHM to stop all elective procedures because a lot of the hospitals are doing it already on their own. You know, as they've seen capacity grow, they've started to limit those elective procedures or procedures that are kind of on that line where, you know, you really should have it done, but it's not an emergency to have it done. You can put it off maybe for six months. They're trying to draw down as much as possible on those on their own. And so there wasn't, they didn't feel a need necessarily to issue a mandate to do so.
And then as far as those conversations with the hospital's capacity, just it's, it is a challenge. It's getting scary out there.
Yeah.
And so have you heard anything about or about hospital systems saying they're talking about even rationing care per se?
A couple have been close to that. I think that the general feeling within the hospitals is that they don't want to go there unless they absolutely have to. So they are exploring other options. That said, our bigger hospital systems, I think, are, are very close to being at the point where they, they feel the need to do that. And it, you know, it's, it's a little different from system to system right now, how they're wanting to deal with that. But I think that if you've been on any of the press conferences recently, you can, you can hear that that's, it's very close to that for a couple of our systems.
Yeah, I know one of my systems, you talk about outlying hospitals wanting to bring a very sick patient in, so we would send a less sick patient to them.
Right.
And so, so I know that that's, there's not been any movement on that yet, but that's, that's a consideration too.
They are actively discussing that, yes.
Good. And then the Omicron, we know that it's more contagious. Does it have the same severity? Do we know anything about that yet?
We're still waiting to see really what it does, and we don't know yet.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Dr. Hughes, for all the information. If we, if we look back 12 months, are we testing, are we countywide, are we testing more people now than we were a year ago?
We can look and see. All right. So a year ago would have been, let's look at number of tests performed. So we are doing, I would say, fewer tests than we were a year ago.
Okay. Is, do you, have you heard hesitance, hesitancy in this regard? There's hesitancy with, with vaccinations. That's pretty clear, but, or at least it seems like it. Is there hesitancy in getting tested in the community? Have you, have you, do you have a feeling on that or?
There has been a little bit. You know, I think that that's, there's always this, that there's a small proportion of people who think that if you don't test, then you don't have it, which of course, I mean, that's something that we've dealt with for many, many years with a number of different diseases. So there, there are people who certainly could be hesitant to test. Part of the fewer tests could be capacity as well. You know, our, our capacity did shrink somewhat, and we've worked to kind of get that capacity back up. Federally, I know that they're talking about making available home tests to, to people. They can basically go online and say, send me this many tests, and they'll ship those out. There's probably going to be a limit. So part of it could be, you know, the decreased capacity that we've had due to kind of that earlier drawdown that we had in the summertime.
Well, and this question will sound ignorant because I'm pretty ignorant. The test that they jammed the thing up into my, you know, brain, I just had that a couple of weeks ago, is, is that, are you content with the reliability of the tests? So in other words, are you, are you content with the amount of limited, the limited amount of either false positives or false negatives right now? Because I'm, I'm sure there's a percentage. I just don't know what it is.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the percentage is right now for, for false positives, but I can tell you, so that antigen test, which is the one where you do it and you get it back quickly.
Yeah, that's not the one where they pierce your brain.
Oh, they do both.
Yeah.
That tends to be more accurate if someone is symptomatic. So you get a higher, really a higher number of false negatives with that antigen test because people could be carrying in it, carrying in it, carrying it and just not be, the test isn't sensitive enough to pick that up. The PCR test, also a brain tickler, can be, it, it tends to be much more accurate regardless of symptomatic status. So PCRs, I tend to like a lot better, but in the absence of being able to get in and wait for several days to get results, you know, the antigen test is, is a, is a acceptable second level.
And, and finally, the, the amount of people tested includes all of the above?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, 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 okay.
Yes. Ours, ours includes both antigen tests and PCR tests if they were performed somewhere other than a home setting.
Clinically, right.
So we don't obviously collect information on tests done at home.
Okay. Thank you, doctor.
And I, I just want to, for those who do not enjoy having their brains stabbed, you can ask with most tests for it to be a nasal swab, which is still a little uncomfortable, but not anything like getting the nasopharyngeal where it goes clear through to the back of your throat. That, that can be something that turns people off to testing. You can actually just get your, the inside of your, your nostrils swabbed essentially. And that's much, much more acceptable. My kids have both had it done, and they tend to come out laughing because it tickles their nose. So that's much better than having that thing rammed clear into the back.
Okay. Thanks for the information.
You bet.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, just to jump on that, does that mean that we can, is that as accurate to do the nasal swab as opposed to the nasopharyngeal swab?
They, they say that it is, it's an acceptable way to do it. So, a lot of places do give the choice. So, if, if that's the only way you're going to get tested is you're not going to do the back of my, you're not going to go clear back, please go get tested anyway. You have options.
I have a couple more questions. One is, there's been talk about a pill from Pfizer. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that's when I was talking about the medications a little bit earlier. That was, I think, one of them is, is that one. And we don't have, we don't have it yet. The distribution is going to be pretty limited to start with. So, if you think back to the very beginning when we had vaccine and we only got, you know, kind of this rationed amount that we had to, basically, it goes to the state, and then you have to push it out to the population in limited amounts. It'll be kind of like that, I would assume, until production really catches up with demand. And so, when we do get it, it's just, it's going to be in limited amounts. Providers are going to have to prescribe that. And, and again, you know, it's not that everybody is going to be able to get, to get it necessarily. But certainly, you know, hopefully, those that are high risk will be able to have access to that first. And I don't know if they're going to put any limits on who to prescribe that to, to begin with or not. I just know that we're only going to be getting a very limited number of doses to start with.
And then, of course, we'll have to figure out where it fits in the whole clinical picture. Like, who do we give monoclonal antibody to, and who do we give those pills to, and who do we give them to?
Exactly. Yeah.
All right. And then, there is a crystal ball question, of course. We've heard that immunization with vaccines, immunization tends to decrease over time. So, boosters do help. Do you know or have any thoughts as to whether we would need boosters again in a few months because it took the boosters to kind of get us, get us protected during this round?
Right. That's a great question. I don't know the answer yet. I don't know that anybody knows that answer yet. This is really one of those topics where we're still learning as we go. You know, whether or not with a third dose, essentially, or a second dose, I guess, if you got J and J. You know, it's, we're going to have to see what, what people's immunity level does over time after that booster dose. I think there's the hope that that immunity level is going to stay higher with that third dose, that that was kind of the, the magic, the magic bullet, I guess, to really get that immunity up there and keep it up there. But we don't know that yet. So, again, this is one of those things where we have to give science. It's time to work. And, you know, we'll let people know as soon as we know whether another booster will be recommended or not.
Good deal. Thanks a lot.
No other lights. I just want to thank you, Dr. Hughes, for being here every week. I, I just think Commissioner Rogers and I talked about having you here, Chris, Commissioner Rogers, as the President of Board of Health, to just present every week because, again, things change. New information comes out. And as public health leaders, we felt it was important for you to be here and give this update. I also want to thank you for being available for updating our Douglas County Senators on an ongoing basis since the onset of this. I've heard great feedback and appreciation of the time we spent with them in, in giving them the information of what was going on here in Douglas County. And I also want to thank the board members for participating in the video vaccine message this morning. I've wanted to do this for a long time, and I thought it was appropriate as a end-of-year message that we produced it this morning. And so, stay tuned. We'll be sending that to you shortly. But again, thank you very much for being here and for the work that not only you, but all your staff do and have been doing through this pandemic. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. And just to very quickly reply, I cannot even express just the amount of gratitude I have to have a group of commissioners that even when we may not see eye to eye on, on a certain topic or on something that I've brought up, just the amount of respect and, and the amount of collaboration and obviously concern for, for the people that you serve, that you bring and afford every week. I've worked with many groups of county commissioners, and I have to say, hands down, this one functions the best. And, and just the support to public health that we get from you is, is just incredible. And, and I, that, I don't take that for granted even a single, a single day. So, thank you all for everything that you do to keep people safe here in Douglas County and for giving me the platform to come and talk to you every week. I will be here as long as you need me to be, and I hope that each of you have just a blessed and wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. With that, we have one more presentation, and that is the Justice Center Project Programs and Project Update. And Kim, you asked, George, you want to go ahead and go first?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
George Chola, I'm here on behalf of the J C D C to give a report to the County Board of the status of the Justice Center project. As you are aware, from, you know, all of you have offices downtown, and you can look out the windows, you can see that there's significant activity undergoing the project. So, now, at the end of the year, I thought it was appropriate to come in and kind of give you an update as far as what's going on. So, the project itself, you know, when we originally established, it's been a while since we've met. And I just kind of want to talk about the guiding principles that kind of paved the path for the, the team as we put this project together. The first was the, you know, addressing the needs for the space in the juvenile courts. Second was to improve the juvenile justice system with a transformative design to serve the children and their families. And that's something that we've done in conjunction with Kim Havakati. And in Kim's report, we'll kind of talk about some of those other transformative actions that are being taken. The building, and it's just one aspect of the transformative aspect of this project. Second, and the final is to design to inspire civic pride. And I'm hoping that some of you have seen the building, that I will think we can check that box, indicate I think we have built a project that is going to change the landscape of that corridor of downtown, hopefully for the better. The scope of the project has not changed at all since the board kind of gave the green light to go forward. It is, consists of a tower, eight-story tower, which will house the community programs, will provide the court support in terms of the clerk's office. The public defender and the county attorney offices will be located at that juncture as well as the juvenile courts. There will be six finished courtrooms with two courtrooms being capable of being added if necessary. Hopefully, if Kim does Yolman's work, they may not be necessary, but we can cross our fingers and hope that's in fact the case. The Youth Center is a four-story facility with 64 finished beds. And then, there is a 1723 building, formerly the M U D corporate office. When M U D moved out of there, it was determined that it's probably more appropriate to recall at the 1723 since they were no longer at that location, and they've got their own corporate office in the northwest sector of the community. So, that project is a four-story project, and that's going to house the juvenile probation office as well have access to community programs in that location. There's a skywalk. I think everybody can see the skywalk is essentially 95% complete. That connects that, that project to this hall as well as the Hall of Justice. The budget for the project has not changed from, roughly a year ago when it was adopted. It is $111 million construction budget. That $111 million reflects the Keywit G M P gross maximum price contract, along with a roughly about 17 or so million dollars in soft costs. When you add the non-construction as well as the project contingency, you end up with about a $128 million project, and that's what we're working with at this junction. Where are we at right now? Currently, we're at the top. Kind of tells you where we're at in terms of expenditures. That's the total project budget of $128 million. About $111 million of that project is the construction piece, as well as the non-construction being about 17 million. The bottom left is kind of what's been paid out to date. That's the project expenditures to date. So, we're about halfway through. We're about 47% of the way through with $128 million. And then, on the bottom right is the Keywit construction phase, which also shows we're about 40, 45% of the way through with what we've paid out, Keywit, to date for the project. Project status, end of the year in December, the tower. I think I talked about the skywalk curtain wall. The curtain wall is the glass structure or encasement that you see on the tower. That's about 95% complete. The hole has been carved, carved into the Hall of Justice, and that link has been finished. The tower curtain is complete with some areas that are being withheld, the material hoist. As far as internally, the drywall framing is on the sixth floor. So, we got eight floors, so we're by six ways, six floors up on the drywall framing. The overhead mechanical electrical has been placed on all floors. The roofing is pretty well complete, except for the expanded lobby areas. That's where it's in progress. The penthouse is complete, and the Level Eight is complete as well. And now, we're kind of finishing the air handling units installations. Those are also in progress. As far as the Youth Center, the steel erection is complete. There's some miscellaneous steel that still needs to be erected, but for the most part, the majority of it's done. The masonry is in progress, the exterior and interior. And what's important is both of these projects now are encased, which means that as winter rolls and the weather gets rougher, we can still, continue, continue work internally. So, that will hopefully allow us to keep on time with the project. The 1723 building, that got a certificate of occupancy from the city on November 29th, and there's a punch list in progress that Keywit is working on. I know that the county, the building commission, and the project team have been working with probation to begin the process of making sure that they begin the process of occupying that facility. And we're hoping that's get done sometime in March of next year. As far as the project timeline, I'm not going to go into extreme detail on this, but I think the big picture is the tower, the Youth Center. Estimated occupancy is June of 2023. Then, the 1723, the estimated full occupancy date is March of 2022. So, the punch list is done. It's just making sure that we get the process of moving folks over from the Keyline Building and other offices across the city into the building. Hopefully, that will be done by March of 2022. Some pictures. I think most of the folks in this room all have come downtown on occasion. Here, you have a picture of the tower as well as the juvenile center as it's going up. On the right is another picture of the tower. You can see the open space. That's kind of where the elevator and other things are being put into place. There we go. I kind of like this picture. And I tell you why I like this picture. The one on the left is actually the rendering that's been prepared. That was prepared well over a year ago. And then, one on the right is what it looks like. And to me, it struck me how uncanny the rendering on the left and what the actual project looks like on the right looks like. So, I think we delivered what we told you we're going to deliver. And I wanted to show that because I think that was really impressive to me, that the rendering and the ultimate product look, look pretty close. I talked about the 1723. That is a major milestone. That's kind of the first major milestone for this project in terms of the construction that is complete. On the left is, I'm just going to give you some quick before and afters. And I think, as everybody recalls, the major rehab that was done to this building was in the HVAC system, completely new HVAC handling system. I think that was a result of COVID and some of the other issues that propped up when this project got rolling. And so, but the rest of it was making sure internally, we got it ready for probation to take possession. So, on the left is what it looked like previously on the first-floor lobby. On the right is kind of what it looks like, more of an open, more well-lighted concept. The first-floor administrative office building, on the left is what it looked like previously. On the right is what it looks like now. And then, the second floor, this is where I would call, this is the old M U D boardroom. You see on the left kind of what it looks like, and on the right, what it looks like at this current juncture. The second-floor file room, kind of what it looks like when we took possession, and then kind of what it looks like now as we prepare for probation to take possession of the, of the facility. Second floor finishes, on the left is what it looks like before we did the construction. And on the right, you see what it looks like now, just more of an open, better lighted building, cleaner in that regard. Third floor, this is kind of what it looked like, what we kind of gutted it. But on the right is what it looks like as a completed facility. And then, the fourth floor, kind of a similar picture, kind of what it looks like, the pantry area before and after. And then, the last kind of is the fourth-floor office area, kind of how we, it's been gutted. And then, the kind of on the right is kind of how it's been put back together. You know, I know this project's a lot more complex than kind of what I've alluded and what I've given you here. I just kind of wanted to give you a brief update, kind of where we're at. I know there's a lot more details that go into this, and I did not know that this was the proper venue to go into extreme detail. But I think all seven of you know that, you know, we're available. If you want to have a more in-depth conversation or questions to answer, just let me know, and I'll make sure that if I can't answer, that I'll find the individual within our team that can address the questions that you may have about the construction phase of this project. With that, I have kind of given, you know, the 50,000 square foot view of the project and kind of, kind of where it currently sits. And I will open myself to any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you, George. No questions at this time. I do, oh, Commissioner Morgan?
Want to thank you, and I know you make these presentations at our building commission meeting also. On 1723, I want to say it's around 50,000 square feet?
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah.
Is that about?
Sounds about right, yeah.
What was, if you don't mind me asking, and you don't have to answer unless you kind of feel comfortable with it, the cost over there for what was done totally, and I know you've kept everything on budget.
Yep.
As of the date, what was it approximately?
Oh, God. I didn't think you were going to ask me that question.
Do you think about it?
Let me think about it, but I will, I will email you. But I want to estimate it was somewhere in the three, four million dollar range, somewhere in that range. If that's just the, the bond money, I know there was additional CARES Act money that went into there for the air handling unit. But I'll get you a breakdown of what that looks like, but it's on budget.
Okay. That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again.
All right. And thank you, George. And on the flip side, it's going to be Ms. Kim Havakati.
Thank you.
Who's going to give us an update on our programs and services work that's been being done.
Good morning. Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator. You have before you, I did up a simple one-page list because it can get very overwhelming as to the various programs and services we're working on. So, when you look on the left-hand side of this document, first, let's start with our prevention and early intervention. On the left-hand side are the current programs that are operating, going at 100% capacity. That's our community-based grant funding. If you guys remember, that's 1.3 million that we have going out to 12 different community-based providers in North and South Omaha to do diversionary work and prevention work with our youth. We have our community plan, which is a five-years, excuse me, four-year strategic plan that we prepared last fall, working with about over 100 different community members to complete that plan as to what our goals are over the next four years. We, of course, have our Juvenile Assessment Center where we continue to divert anywhere from 1,200 to 1,500 youths that have law enforcement contact. And then, we have our Restorative Justice Program. So, we have mediation programs and family mediation programs that we do. The new initiatives we're working on that are in some, that are in the beginning phase, some are very close to completion. The first one, the Family Resource Center Network, I know I've spoken to you about that before, which would be a prevention, early intervention program for what in the system we call status offenders. But really, what that is, are youth that do not have law enforcement contact, but it might be school attendance issues, mental behavioral health issues, missing runaway youth issues in order to get their needs met sooner instead of having to go into the juvenile justice system. We also are working with Metro Community College. They have created an alternative program for our youth that's called the Youth Forward Academy. It's really to get them interested in the trades, to help them get their G E D, and then interested in the trades through M C C. So. Job training programs, we've had meetings and are working with Heartland Job training programs, we've had meetings and are working with Heartland Workforce Development because we know we can talk about, from a prevention standpoint, the needs of our youth, but we also have to talk about the needs of the family. And a lot of the parents of the youth that we are concerned about also need some workforce development skills, so we're partnering with Heartland Workforce Development on that. Last one, of course, is our gun and violence prevention and early intervention program. And you'll notice that's both for prevention and system intervention youth, and that is the grant that you guys just approved today. That was an OJ JDP grant that we wrote in June that we were just awarded. It's a three-year grant, over nine hundred thousand dollars, that will be going to community-based providers to put what is known as credible messengers on the street to work directly with our highest-risk youth. We should get the funding from that hopefully by the end of January now that it's been approved. So we intend to start that in March. The other part of that federal grant includes working with some of our key middle schools in the targeted areas to do prevention work in guns and violence. It is an evidence-based program known as the Phoenix Curriculum, and that will be going into the schools through a community-based provider to start working with those youth. Now with regards to interventions for system-involved, like I said, everything on the left are the things we currently have going on that I know you're very familiar with. The new initiatives that we're working on are the stability services we have talked about. Remember the home program is an electronic monitoring program. We have now added services availability that judges and attorneys can use more than an electronic monitor to keep those youth safely at home and stable in the community and not in detention. Those have started within the last about three months, four months going. We also just had our staff trained, both at the juvenile assessment center and at DCYC this past week, on an evidence-based screening tool known as the MACI II. It's to relay screen for mental behavioral health needs so we can try to get at those needs sooner rather than later. And then of course, our intervention program that I've already talked about. At the youth center, I believe in our presentation last month, we've pretty much talked about all of the current programs. We've talked about the new initiatives with regards to our room confinement grant that we have, the MACI II that's coming in. We did get a psychologist hired about six months ago, so we have a psychologist on staff. Only a couple of things to add to this one are two. One is thank you for the ARPA funds for the Douglas County Youth Center so that we can buy tablets for all the youth from an educational standpoint. Also two therapists on staff because we know the high needs of our youth. And also to continue funding for the behavioral health initiative because we know how important they are. The last thing we were also given for the Douglas County Youth Center, we call it a virtual reality grant, but it is a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar, three-year grant through the Bureau of Justice Administration to bring in virtual reality concepts into the Douglas County Youth Center as a de-escalation technique for our youth in room confinement, also as a positive youth development technique when youth have been good. And it is just like it sounds, it is the virtual reality goggles. It is working on the mindfulness. Along with this grant that we just got is also one more therapist, so we will have a therapist that will be directly involved with this project. And the last part of that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant includes an evaluation, a very extensive external evaluation. We are the only facility in the country, even at the adult level or the juvenile level, that are trying to implement some virtual reality type of mindfulness techniques into our youth in the facility. So there's a lot of interest at the federal level as to how this interacts with the mental behavioral health needs. And then our systemic things, we've talked about before. The only thing I wanted to add to that one is we are still waiting to hear on our two thousand and twenty-one Title II Racial and Ethnic Disparity Grant. We are a non-participating state and the OJ JDP has not allowed that funding yet. We hope to hear in the next thirty days. If we do, that would be another nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for racial and ethnic disparity work. So that's where we're sitting currently. I'll gladly answer any questions.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kim, thank you for the information. I've seen a lot of this and you and I have talked at a cursory, on various occasions, a cursory standpoint on a lot of this, and I always appreciate your knowledge and information. I was going to ask you, I always believe in options when it comes to public policymaking. I think Washington could probably take some guidelines in that regard in a lot of different ways, but that, I digress. I believe in options in public policymaking, especially if we have options to drive efficient public safety. One of the things that you and I and others will talk about with you is when it comes to rehabilitation of young citizens, the program metrics are important to judge the pure value that can be tracked. So those options are important when you look at those metrics and you understand how to read the statistics. Can we identify the current programs in place? I think, I think we have statistics and we know how those programs are actually working, and you and I have talked about some of those. What I wanted to ask is obviously, if we obviously track or have a thought process to track the new initiatives that we're going to put in place, some of those have practical applications in other jurisdictions around the country, right? I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel all the time. Some of these are.
Correct.
Some of these are our ideas and yours and stuff, but some of them have practical implication or application. Do we, can we, can we expect on a quarterly or an annual basis to actually analyze these when they get, when they get implemented? So we can, and again, reading statistics is an art, but can we expect that on a quarterly basis? Can we expect it on an annual basis? So when we put all of this stuff in, how do we as a board, aside from getting off to the side with you and talk about the success stories, how are we going to do that? What's the strategy associated with that?
Well, for every new program or initiative we're doing, we're setting up a database in order to track the data from it. Now, yes, we could report out every quarter. I think probably the first six months to a year, it will be more the demographic data. I don't think we're going to get to outcome data as to a particular service and the effectiveness for probably twelve to eighteen months till we get enough data there. But no, every new initiative has a new database or new information system that we are collecting it in so that we can make sure and track everything appropriately.
Are you, do you worry? I don't, I don't think. But do you have a worry that the new initiatives don't have enough, or in some instances, don't have enough practical application in other jurisdictions and we're, and we're going, oh, we, you know, we got that crystal ball, we think it's going to work here. Does it keep you up at night or? It doesn't mean.
That piece doesn't keep me up at night. There's other things that do, but that piece really doesn't keep me up at night. I think we have a process in place and we belong to some national organizations. We are constantly running our information, both nationally and within our state, to figure out, is this working? What's working? What needs to be tweaked to make it better?
That's great. I'm sure, I probably can speak for the whole board. I really appreciate all the work you're doing. This is, it's heavy lifting, but thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks a lot, Kim. And just a couple of things. First, the Family Resource Center, is that the one, the collaboration with UNO? I see that's the, one of the new initiatives and programs. Is that was discussed in the Child and Youth Services meeting?
Yes, that was, that's the same thing that was discussed, that we did the environmental scan on, is that prevention early intervention system? Yes.
Is there any timeframe for implementation of that in particular?
Our goal is to have the first spoke as we talk about, it would be an organizational, operational hub, and then you'd have spokes in the community, actually located, easily accessible. Our goal is to have one of those open by next fall. So we're pushing it as fast as we can, but we want to make sure that it is collaborative as possible because this has to be a true public-private partnership to make it work from a sustainability standpoint. So that's our goal. I would say we have a fifty-fifty shot of meeting that goal right at this point.
Well, yeah, you have to have buy-in from the folks in the community.
Correct, correct.
And then the second thing is more of this to comment, to know that, that the juveniles are getting iPads and virtual reality, that's really thinking outside the box. And when you, when you think about what attracts kids and what will, will help them like engage, that's the type of thinking that we really need. So, so I just wanted to comment, that's really cool. I'm glad.
We're excited for it because it's new and innovative, but I don't know how, I think it's going to be very successful because that's what kids want today.
Yeah, well, I think with the VR in particular, you talked about mindfulness, but you could even do, it'll sound cheesy, but maybe role-playing in stressful situations, how do you handle it?
There's a lot of conflict resolution type stuff.
Yep, that's what I was thinking. Great. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
Kim, I just want to, and as Commissioner Friend said, you know, he thought he was speaking on behalf of the board, but I think I am too. I just want to thank you for how much you care about the future of the young people that are at our youth center and what you've done these past few years. You've really made a difference, and I just really appreciate that caring and passion that you have for this job and the future of our young people. So thank you so much and wish you a really happy new year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Some people call it stubbornness, but that's okay. I'll take the passion compassion.
Commissioner Garcia?
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning.
First, let me commend the partnership with Metro Community College and the Alternative High School Completion Program. I think for one, that's a model example of a public entity, another public entity coming together to serve the need of both. You know, they're always looking to increase their enrollment, we're looking to get our youth on positive pathways, including the trades. So I think that's amazing. Thank you for leading that effort along with your staff. Also, in regards to kind of the high-level overview here, what is the high-level overview currently with the goal of, of course, getting less youth, you know, all the way down the pipeline to youth detention and with the goal of fitting that need within the smaller capacity in the building that's up and coming? How are we trending currently and where do we want to be, you know, in one or two years when the new youth detention center is launched and open? So how is that going?
Our, our goal is a sixty-four-bed facility, to appropriately operate a facility, you like to be at eighty percent. So our goal is to get to eighty percent of sixty-four beds. You can get to ninety percent, best practice is eighty percent. And one of the things you have to keep in mind as you're looking at the new facility, just like we do here, you cannot put boys and girls on the same floor. So you have to be very cognizant of the separation when it comes to boys and girls. So that's what the goal is.
Yeah, definitely.
If that's what you're asking, Commissioner.
What are we averaging right now? I know Brad was here a couple of months ago, but can you remind us, what are we averaging right now?
I did pull some very basic data from, from today, so it's not in-depth. Today we're at sixty-five youth, three of those youth are from Sarpy County, eighty-five percent boys, fifteen percent girls. Couple of the concerning data that I know we've talked about before, twenty-three percent of those youth are state wards, so they're state wards in our child welfare system along with our juvenile justice system. Forty percent are charged in the adult criminal system, sixty percent are in our juvenile system. So when you look at that, I just did a real brief length of stay, and this is probably the, the area we're working on the most right now, is twenty-five percent of those youth have been there four months or longer. Most of our juvenile youth are moving within thirty-five to forty days, which is good, but our adult youth are staying six to nine months. So we have to, to really start working on that length of stay, which of course goes to some of the programs we just talked to from a mental health aspect, that you really need to be in there stabilizing those youth and keeping them safe as they're in that facility. I can get any more data that you do want, and I know at the end of the year, in January, we'll be doing another presentation with a whole year's worth of data.
Sure, definitely. You mentioned number sixty-five, more or less the average right now. Do you think that's influenced by COVID or is that kind of the average stat? It would be regardless of COVID?
No, I, I think what's influencing us most now is not necessarily COVID. I think COVID a year ago was greatly influenced. We are being greatly impacted with the worker shortage with our community providers in the community. So a lot of the places that our children, our youth would go to from detention, I mean, I can think of two of them right now are running at fifty percent capacity because they can't get the staff to keep their staff safe and the youth safe and to run at full capacity. That backs everything up into the system, so until we can get those facilities back running at a hundred percent capacity, we're, we're all feeling the repercussions of it, Commissioner.
Sure, definitely. And just last comment, I know we definitely both agree that the goal is to have our youth not be in youth detention, so, you know, efforts like the new grant.
One minute.
That was approved with OJ JDP, you know, leading in the efforts of prevention intervention, especially being one of few that were selected nationwide, our city, so I want to commend you on that. Those are the efforts that I love to see on the prevention intervention side, so thank you for leading that grand effort.
Thank you.
All right, no other lights. Thank you, Kim, for being here. With that, go ahead.
Is this a presentation that we can call?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry Storer, five oh one five Lafayette, Omaha, six eight one three two. As I recall, we were not allowed to vote on this building complex, but I want to expand on my earlier comments by using some of the words in this nice propaganda piece. Progressivism is a modern term for Marxism. Yes, it means other things too. However, I want to say something about some words here. We constantly hear these words repeated even across the nation, restorative justice. Excuse me, common sense says that that is refuting our justice system. If we have to restore it, you're claiming that we don't really have a justice system. That's what Marxism does. Down at the bottom, we have cultural inclusivity. Nice peachy keen words and theories, practices at the new center. Excuse me, if you're not including somebody particularly in a justice center, we're at Douglas County Detention Center or prison, there are laws against that already. We do not need more touchy-key-feely programs that skirt around the failure of our justice system. That's what Marxism does. Stability services for home programs, a lot of these programs that we're paying for out of our pocket are programs that should have been done in the home. Yes, there are many reasons why there wasn't, but government tends to take, progressivism tends to take that responsibility out of the hands of the people that should be doing that, and it comes out of our pocket for it. So why are we at one hundred percent capacity if these programs work? That's my point. Statistics aren't the answer for everything. These words are things that do not exist. They are not in the biological framework or phylum, whatever you want to call it. They're words, they're not animal kingdom. So let's stop using them and get back to common sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report as presented. And then we have one resolution approving the payment for the ARPA funding to the building commission for COVID-nineteen-related cleaning for county offices and departments in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Next is the.
Motion passes seven zero.
Sorry. Human Resources, weekly personnel from civil service as presented, and then no legislative items. We don't have need for executive session, but before we adjourn, Karen, can you, I just wanted to thank the board for this year. We've had highs and lows, and we hope that this new year, we come in healthier and stronger than we were this year. And as we part today, I just want to leave you with a little piece of my heart and give you for your Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. you for your Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Could we have a motion to adjourn? Second. Please vote.
Recording stopped.
Make it a motion in second again on that, I apologize.
Motion-
Okay, and motion passes seven to zero.